Good evening, I will now call to order the Monday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-three Town Council meeting, if you would please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge we just. Which stands one nation under God in this law, liberty and justice for all.
All right, up first on the agenda is the approval of the memorandum of the March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three regular Town Council meeting, a copy has been posted, are there any questions from councillors? And make a motion to approve.
First by councillor Garrett, second by councillor Troy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next would be the approval of the April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three claims, were there any questions from councillors regarding claims? I'll make a motion to approve claims, second, second by councillor Melton, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a request to speak on agenda item, I have two here, Amy, do you have any other ones?
No, just those two.
Okay, very good. Just a quick reminder to the folks who are speaking, you've got three minutes and as you get up here, I'll give you the one minute warning on your timer. So we've got two folks to speak, the first one is Roger Burris, and if you would, when you come up and you get to the podium, please just state your name, your address, and I'll start the clock from there.
Good evening, my name is Roger Burris, I live at forty-six oh five Hickory Court in Seinsville. And with the Carpenter Nature Preserve on your agenda, I just wanted to give you a little bit of historical background on some of the parks work. I'm not here on behalf of the Parks Department, I'm no longer their lawyer, kind of weird for me to be here when I'm not being paid. So here I am, because I'm a parks enthusiast and and this is just such an opportunity, I just cannot remain quiet about it. I started representing the Parks Board in nineteen eighty-seven or thereabouts, when we had three parks in Seinsville and a budget of about fifty thousand dollars a year. The Parks Department could not have gotten anywhere near where they are now without the support of the Town Council, particularly in acquisition of property. In two thousand and five, the Town Council purchased the land for Mulberry Fields, you know, the Parks Department could not swing that, so they had to rely on the Town Council. Fortunately, Town Council President was a guy by the name of Dick Crane, who had been president of the town of the Park Board before he became a member of the Town Council, so he kind of understood that. Another thing that happened under Dick Crane back in nineteen ninety-nine, he started helped to start with the Park Board Community Committees, and one of those committees was a land acquisition committee. And wouldn't you know that back then, the person who became the head of that committee was a lady by the name of Nancy Carpenter. So Nancy and her husband Jim have been advocating for nature preserves and parks in Seinsville for, you know, close to twenty-five years. And the opportunity that they're helping to enable the Parks Department to do possibly with your approval is just such an opportunity. We just cannot mess this up. It's also a great opportunity to parlay some of the grants, you know, that are available and that they've already received to make this happen. And so, you know, the Parks Department has a couple of bonds, they paid off their first bond issuance, I think in two thousand and twenty-two. They've got about seven million that they're paying on now, when they got that, when the Town Council approved that seven million, they were seeking another nine million that was not approved, that would have kind of maxed out their bonding capacity back in two thousand and nineteen, at the end of two thousand and nineteen. And and I think one of the main reasons that was not approved was because four members of this Town Council were were not serving again. And the remaining ones, a couple of whom are here tonight, you know, didn't want to have that debt with a new Town Council coming on, so so we have, I think the Parks has plenty of capacity now, I think it makes perfect sense to approve this what's before you tonight regarding the Carpenter Nature Preserve, and if you have any questions for me based upon my historical knowledge, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Up next would be David Means.
Yes, my name is David Means, I live at forty-six thirty-seven Summersong Road here in Seinsville. Well, I can't, I'm supposed to be recognized for a second.
Oh, you're good, yeah.
I'm here, I'll be brief, I'm here in support of the Carpenter Nature Preserve as well. I have lived for forty-five years in Seinsville, thirty-two of which I lived in Sugar Bush right across from Starkey Park. I felt very privileged to do that, that I consider that to be the major park in this town. Over the years, I've seen so much development and all the green space and all the open land just gets snapped up and it still is. And I I was very heartened when I heard of this, I used to play golf, I never played at Wolf Run, but I have been out there since. And I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity for the town to approve this and to get the ball rolling, can it can happen soon enough as far as I'm concerned, thank you.
Thank you, David. Up next on the agenda is the Mayor Administration update, and we did not get an update, so move on to Town Council update, are there any updates from councillors?
Not necessarily an update from councillors, but maybe looking for an update if there is one on the on the fire chief insurance claim. Is there anything that can be shared with the public at this point? No, I I would, and I I do this just about every meeting now since September. You know, this is a claim that's been out there since September, is not moving, we're gonna end up getting sued and, you know, it it can all be avoided if we just put a little pressure on the insurance company to resolve this. You know, we're, we've got a fire chief that should never have had to defend himself in in court. Out about, I'd say at this point, yeah, I know the recent number was eighty-some thousand, but every day this drags out, it adds up to more and more, I could only assume it's about a hundred thousand now. It's not getting any cheaper, so if the mayor is listening, or anybody from the administration is listening, you know, we'd like to move this forward and get this resolved before we end up in another lawsuit, thank you.
Any other councillors?
Yeah, just a quick comment, I've been emailing back and forth with Cindy for regarding the past filings for our for our report for the town over the past several years, as well as when we do file for this year, Cindy's been.
Your thumbs up, Dr. Troy.
Cindy's been very gracious in letting me know that those are coming, and so part of, part of I think what our responsibility is, especially mine, as this is my last year on Town Council, is to make sure that we do have, continue to be fiscally responsible going forward, so with the kind of conversation with President Plunkett, we're going to take a real dive into the town's budgets to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible going forward as well. Because as you know from past conversations, I've had concerns about what we were passing and well, what the transparency behind it as well, so just to let you know that that conversation has started and hopefully we will work on the budget a little sooner this year than we have in the past.
Any other councillors? Moving on to old business, there are no old business items. First item up on new business is a consideration of an ordinance regarding rate increases for solid waste collections, disposals and recyclables. This is ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight, and this is a first reading, we have Lance, Director of Department of Public Works, Lance Lance and Heather Harris present.
Thank you, good evening, I'll introduce this topic and then quickly turn it over to Ms. Harris, who has drafted the documents before you this evening and can walk you through the three matters you have on your agenda, but just as a reminder, at your last meeting, we received public bids for solid waste trash and recycling residential services to those people in the town or urban service district. Since then, we quickly reviewed those, checked with all of their references, their other municipal contracts, and there was no reason to disqualify their bid, they are deemed the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and I would like to take a moment. If I could ask Dan Vaney just to stand up, Dan is with Priority Waste, and he and I have been talking several times today, along with the rest of my staff, to implement what is certainly never going to be a perfect process, but I think much better than the transition that was thrust upon us last year when WM purchased Ray's Trash, so he's not prepared to say anything, but he is going to hang around for the meeting and introduce himself when this is over. And I just appreciate his diligence as we have stepped into this new contract scenario, so by virtue of your action at your last council meeting after opening the bids, your council president and the mayor executed an interim contract, so there was no disruption services, the very last day of waste management service was March twenty-ninth. And priority began the very following day on March thirtieth, so with that, I will turn things over to Heather, who will walk through these processes, although reorganization, science contractual authority to the mayor, our local governance doesn't always fit neatly into state statute, so there were a lot of discussions, and I think Heather's got a very good finished product and process for you.
Great, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Lance, he's been working really tires tirelessly along with Amy Noonan, who is the mayor's counsel and kind of helping sort through this process, so thanks to both of them. The, we have three related items, A, B and C. A is the one that Lance just outlined for the council, increases the rate. This is a public hearing, so I'll just introduce that and then we'll go back for the public hearing. In working with the mayor's council, I don't think we actually have to have a public hearing, but President Plunkett did want for interest of public transparency to go ahead and hold the public hearing, so that people would be on this about the new rate structure. The second is a consideration of a resolution to approve the emergency municipal solid waste and recyclables collection and disposal contract. That, as you may recall, was an emergency contract put in place to bridge what will be a permanent three-year contract that was approved pursuant to the bid process that we went through. And we know and thank Priority for stepping up and helping make that a seamless process and one we weren't sure of when we opened all the bids a couple of weeks ago. So we really appreciate everything they've done, and then the third item, C, is a resolution approving the municipal waste contract going forward, so that will be the three-year agreement. In the first ordinance that you'll see on the recycling fees, as we talked about previously, these are really fees dictated by the public bidding process, so we don't have a lot of wiggle room in terms of how the process works, we put in place a public bid, they're opened in a public meeting, we go with the lowest and most responsive responsive and responsible bidder, meaning they give us the best price and they do it in a way that meets the needs of the town. And we did that, as we went through that process, Priority was selected, and their rates were, I think about two million dollars less than your next competitor, so the rates increases significantly less than we anticipated, we thought the rate increase would be somewhere around the eighteen to nineteen dollars per household, so that's a significant savings to the town. And so we've got this new language, which will just replace what is current code, we've sort of modernized it for the new process that is required by state statute to cross-reference that process. And then we also reference the Boone County Solid Waste Management District Special Assessment Fee, and I know that Lance can share a little bit more, that's a forty cent per household fee that's collected and then given to Boone County for their actual solid waste facility, and we do get some of that rebated back to the town, which will be able to deposit back into a special fund to offset expenses related to this program, so that is the first ordinance, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from councillors?
No, I just want to thank everybody involved in making this as seamless process as possible, this could have been a complete disaster for us. But but I, just from hearing about it to the resolution process, I think the people involved were incredibly responsible from administration to councillors that were involved, so thank you to all of you.
I just wanted to reconfirm that the reporting to the Boone County Solid Waste District is happening on the two sides as well, not just the payments, right?
Correct, that's part of the regular process that you'll have to go through, yes, you're correct.
Great, thank you.
It's not addressed in this ordinance, but it's operationally what will happen.
This is a public hearing and I have proof publication of the notice of public hearing. At this point, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments from members of the public. Having none, I will close the public hearing.
Is this something we want to do three-step, just to expedite it, because we're all here?
Need to, probably.
Yeah, okay.
Everyone would appreciate that.
Yeah.
If there's, if there's no questions, I make a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh eight.
I got it, first by councillor Garrett, and second by Vice President Burke, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. At this point, I would make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second by councillor Garrett, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. And then I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight on first reading.
Final reading.
Final reading. On final reading, sorry.
Second.
Second by Vice President Burke, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a consideration of a resolution approving an emergency municipal solid waste and recyclables collection and disposal contract, this is resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero nine, others already explained that, are there any questions from councillors?
No, just to echo, you know, Dr. Troy already said this, but to publicly thank the administration, especially Lance, Mr. Lance, President Plunkett honestly, who really stepped up and had to do some heavy lifting as well, Town Legal Council, folks in Priority. I don't know if everyone in town was kind of paying attention to maybe a potential emergency that we kind of avoided. And it really was just a wonderful example of some real collaboration that's possible when everybody kind of comes together to solve a problem, and so it was just, it was fun to be a part of it, and I'm glad we could be part of the solution, so, thanks for, thanks for everybody.
Any questions from councillors, anything else? I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero nine, second, second by councillor Culp, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a consideration of a resolution approving a municipal solid waste and recyclable collection and disposal contract, resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash ten.
President Plunkett, do you need to suspend the rules on B and move that one forward?
Nope.
Nope.
It's a resolution.
Okay.
Questions from councillors? I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash ten.
Second.
Second by councillor Troy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next on the agenda, item D is consideration of an ordinance authorizing bonds, this is for Carpenter Nature Preserve, this is ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero nine, this is a first reading. And we have Parks Director Jared Lockston and Parks Department, or Parks Board President John Stare.
Good evening, thank you, good evening, President Plunkett, Vice President Burke and councillors. My name is John Stare, one ninety North Sixth Street, and I'm appearing before you tonight in my capacity as the President of the Board of Parks and Recreation. As you know, we're here seeking preliminary approval of a bond not to exceed five point five million dollars for the purchase and phase one engineering and construction documents at the former Wolf Run Golf Course, now known as the Carpenter Nature Preserve. The Parks Board unanimously approved this request at our February ninth meeting, several of our board members are here in support tonight. And in addition, we believe this proposal has broad public support, not just from the people with property adjacent to it or nearby, but support from people throughout the town. Before we voted, our board held two public hearings related to this request to show remonstrance, and none was offered. The preserve is two hundred and fifteen acres of important wildlife habitat, Eagle Creek runs through it. It would be our first park in Union Township, and we believe will involve into a regional destination, not just for Boone County, but for a broader region of central and northern Indiana, providing unmatched environmental education opportunities, helping to protect our town's primary water source and economic development in the coming years. Now, we do have some ambitious plans for this site, but none of that can happen without capturing the land first. And we are being aided in that process by some good citizens, Jim and Nancy Carpenter, who have purchased the land, held on to it at their expense, and are willing to sell it back to the town at a discount to help this preserve reach its full potential. Now, in just a few minutes, Jared, our Park Superintendent, Jared Lockston, will provide more details, followed by our consultants from Crow Financial to drill into the numbers behind it, but first, I'd like to bring in Jim and Nancy Carpenter, who would like to say a few words.
Do we need to give our address, or just talk?
Yeah, probably, yeah, go ahead.
Jim and Nancy Carpenter, sixty-five seventeen South eight hundred East Seinsville. So thanks to everybody for coming tonight, and thanks for giving us a chance to, we'll just take a couple of minutes here. So actually Nancy and I, our business and our personal mission has always been to bring people and nature together and to share the joy of birds and nature, but also for forty years, we've been involved in in various organizations around the state of Indiana, helping to preserve, find, protect, reconstruct all kinds of natural areas that are great for nature, but also for the birds and and also for the, for folks that can visit. When we visited this property first time two and a half years ago, it was clear that to us from our experience, there is never going to be anything like this available again anywhere near Seinsville, and that we just had to protect this area, and so that's what we did, and so, and then in the meantime, between us, our gift that will do a portion of it, as well as some other grants came in, it's going to be an incredible price to the town to be able to buy, so, and I think you'll get some details later on that, so, and Nancy?
Okay. I just want to say just a little quote that Benjamin Franklin has been credited with saying, "We only know the worth of water when the well is dry." And our well is our land and our waters and our wild places around Seinsville, which protects us from just being a sea of development. So that is why we are so passionate about this. Because Jim and I are so passionate about it and protecting these sacred places for generations to come, we have decided to further support this project by making an additional gift of a half a million dollars for the care and development of this special place. These funds will be, would be administered by the Seinsville Parks Foundation once the land is purchased by the town and is part of the system of the Seinsville Parks. We feel so grateful to be part of this wonderful opportunity, and we wish to thank you.
On behalf of the Parks Board, we appreciate Jim and Nancy's working with us in this process so far, we appreciate your attention tonight, and Jared will now give the presentation on the bonding for Carpenter Nature Preserve.
Thank you, John, thank you, Jim and Nancy, for this opportunity, I am completely honored to be before you presenting this to the town of Seinsville. Jared Lockston, Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. And tonight, I want to give a comprehensive overview of the history of the Carpenter Nature Preserve as the town entered into the spotlight with it, as well as where we are today and where we could be going in the future upon your consideration of a bond for the acquisition and development of the Carpenter Nature Preserve not to exceed five point five million dollars. So a little history of the site. From the eighties through two thousand and seventeen, Wolf Run Golf Course operated in two hundred and fifteen acres in Union Township. A very challenging course with its unique topography, sand traps and other things that instill anger on the on the course. It invited not only our regional community, but also members from around the country and beyond to fly in and experience this renowned course. In two thousand and seventeen, the course did shut down, and there was a new vision projected for the site. And in two thousand and eighteen, that was to develop it into housing and mixed-use commercial and office space. So sixty single-family homes, two hundred multifamily homes, and a hundred thousand square feet of retail and offices were proposed at that time. It was at that time that that proposition was brought before the community and the town and ultimately was denied. And that is truly the only reason we have this opportunity this evening to be before you with this proposal. So it is certainly of the essence of time. So today, Carpenter Nature Preserve sits in a state between a former golf course and being reclaimed by nature, you can still see existing infrastructure on the site, but certainly vegetation and wildlife has began to take back over. That has only been expedited as we continue to develop in our urban core, and those species are pushed out of where they were living before and continue to move to those more rural places. So as Jim and Nancy said, this this truly is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to conserve a substantial portion of our rural community for future generations to enjoy. And tonight, we're going to talk not only about this opportunity before you, but all the reasons that make sense for our park system now and for into the future, so I'm happy to present that for you. So a timeline of events, our interaction with the carpenters began. our interaction with the carpenters began, uh, formally on March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, when the Seinsville Parks and Recreation Board entered into a letter of intent with the carpenters to explore the shared vision of transforming the former, uh, Wolf Run Golf Course into a public park. It was at that time we began to discuss, uh, that vision with the carpenters and explore what that would look like at, should we enter it into our park system. Uh, September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, the Parks Department requested an additional appropriation from Parks Cash Reserves Fund one oh three to fund the master planning of this site. And we recruited, uh, um, I'm sorry, recruited, uh, Ronsdell Ernstberger and Associates, Delve Architecture and Ecologic to, uh, uh, conduct an assessment of the site, as well as a robust public engagement process to identify what Carpenter Nature Preserve would look for our community through public communication and master planning. Uh, on September seventh, that master planning process was voted by this council in favor seven oh, and we got to work. Uh, September twenty twenty-one through March two thousand and twenty-two, REA, uh, Delve and Ecologic took inventories of the site, not only the native species that are on-site with Ecologic, but also the existing facilities. There was a clubhouse and a bunkhouse on-site, as well as the, uh, structure of the bridges and other infrastructure on-site. They took all that information to help inform the master plan, as well as began that robust community involvement with the department, the carpenters, key stakeholders and politicians, as well as the public. From that master planning process, we were invited to dream big. So we did just that. There's a fully realized, uh, master plan of the Carpenter Nature Preserve. Uh, two hundred and fifteen acres, uh, with an accessible trail loop, as well as a rustic earthen trail. Uh, restroom facilities, um, boardwalks over wetlands, as well as canopy tree walks and other bells and whistles that'll truly invite, uh, people from just beyond Seinsville to come and explore this extraordinary park. In addition, the site was also determined to be a good fit for a permanent home for our nature center. So, uh, currently the nature center is within the Husky Mayfield Library, and we have a fantastic partnership in that space, uh, welcoming over fourteen thousand Seinsville residents last year alone. So we are certainly seeing lots of foot traffic and excitement as we continue nature education in our community. Also, there was the opportunity for a public-private partnership through the White Oaks Common space. So this was an area delineated that could have mixed-use, uh, commercial enterprises or, uh, small events and venue setting. Um, that could complement the park, as well as invite new users that might not come out to a park, uh, to explore nature. Because as we know, as we continue to grow, we understand that not everyone is going to head to a nature park to hike trails or observe wildlife. But if we can entice them through another activity, maybe brunch, maybe, uh, attending a wedding, and then they accidentally stumble upon nature, well, that's still a victory in our book. So at conclusion of the master planning process, we understood that this most certainly would be a legacy project. With all the things we dreamt about entertaining the site, we knew it was going to cost a lot. Um, so we broke it up into phases. Um, at that time, the most crucial component of the master planning process, which remains today, is acquisition of the preserve. Without the property, we can't move forward with any of these plans. So this is certainly and always will be step one. From there, phase two would be a series of construction projects to add amenities to the site, inviting the public. And as we have opportunities, either through donations or grants, uh, we would explore filling in all of those pieces that were conceptualized in the master plan. And ultimately, as we worked down the phasing, uh, as opportunities arose, we could explore putting a permanent nature center there, as well as should a entity come in that wanted to partner, we could explore the White Oaks Common project. So that was kind of the history of, of, and the comprehensive overlook of what happened with the master planning process. But I wanted to speak to why this project specifically is such a capstone thesis to what's been going on in our park system for the past fifty years. And I'll start with conservation. Um, much like Starkey Park being, uh, largely untouched eighty acres in our urban core. Um, the Carpenter Nature Preserve has the opportunity to conserve a large area, uh, on an even grander scale. At a time when, uh, development continues and, uh, green spaces gobbled up, we don't have the mechanisms to recreate these natural spaces. We can plant trees, we can extend habitat, but there's still microbes in soils and things that we just can't replicate in a lab yet. So we don't know how long it's going to take for, uh, succession planting and things like that to really create the ecosystems we have today. That's why conservation is so important, because we're not making more of this. So this is an opportunity to serve as a two hundred and fifteen acre oasis for those species that are displaced during development, as well as introduce new generations to nature and educate them on the importance of protecting our natural world. It's also to a capstone to a complete park system. So up until twenty fifteen, uh, the Seinsville Park System was, uh, condensed in Eagle Township, having nineteen parks serving, uh, an urban core population. With the, uh, reorganization, uh, Seinsville grew to sixty-nine, uh, square miles. So now we have no park presence in Union or Perry Township. This acquisition would be the first step towards, uh, achieving a presence in those communities. This would be our first park in Union Township and lead us to a destination that we could continue to work with development and work with landowners to complete our park system up to this, uh, the Carpenter Nature Preserve. Um, utilizing information from our previous master plans, um, in twenty thirteen, we asked the question of, do we need more green space? And overwhelmingly, we saw the results that people wanted that. Um, uh, continued into twenty eighteen, the same trends exist with over eighty percent wishing to have more green space. And from the, uh, community engagement of our twenty twenty-three master plan, which is still being finalized, we had eighty-one percent, uh, continuing to, uh, wish for more natural spaces. Uh, further, you know, understanding what the needs are, our community are. Uh, question three from the twenty eighteen study, how important are having parks and trails and facilities within walking distance of your home? And overs, overwhelmingly, the majority of people do wish to have those services. And of course, um, would you like Seinsville to invest more funds into Parks and Recreation? Astoundingly, yes. Um, but we understand that we don't operate in the vacuum and there are competing interests and other priorities in our town. But just wanted to provide the data that we have seen over and over in our park planning documents. Uh, question eighteen from the twenty eighteen survey is how would you like Seinsville Parks and Recreation to pay for new amenities and programs? And as you can see, obviously utilizing our existing budgets or grants are towards the top. Of course, donations always rise to the top, but there are also some appetite for new taxes as well as municipal bonds. So what this tells us is, uh, our community is asking us to explore utilizing every funding mechanism we have to make these priorities happen. And that's exactly what we do. Uh, back to the, the master thesis, um, the Eagle Creek Greenway is, uh, was first presented formally in the twenty sixteen Strategic Trails Implementation Plan. This twenty sixteen plan laid a framework for the trails and pathways that would enhance Seinsville and, uh, make it a very walkable, connected community. As you can see, um, along Eagle Creek, there is a dotted green line, which is proposing that trail up along Eagle Creek. And should we acquire the Carpenter Nature Preserve, that would serve at the top of that trail. And, and, and serve as a destination, uh, for all those residents that are coming from the village up to explore Carpenter and back. I'll actually, uh, share, share a story I heard, uh, from a former park board member. In the nineties, uh, the park board was interested in extending this trail, uh, south to Marion County. Um, and as you look at the maps today and look at GIS, there's actually only a few parcels in between Eagle Creek Park in Indianapolis and the Seinsville Municipal border. So there is still very much an opportunity to not only connect our two communities, but connect Eagle Creek Park to the Carpenter Nature Preserve, creating an Eagle Creek Greenway in the future. Uh, linking our two communities, serving as a regional draw and destination as well. Which just so happens to go through our urban core and village, which would have an opportunity for those on their bikes to start out in Indianapolis, make a nice lunch stop in the village, and then continue up to Carpenter. And as I mentioned, uh, there, we're not making new native spaces and wild natural spaces. So, um, as a part of our twenty twenty-three, uh, master plan, we had a comprehensive land study done of areas that the park system should focus. Now, obviously, this lends itself to finding those ecological areas of value and, uh, trying to find opportunities within those. So as you can see, uh, from this map of Seinsville, um, the large blue line is the Eagle Creek Corridor. So any opportunity we have to, uh, grab land within that, either working with development or donors that wish to donate a portion, is a win for our park system. Capturing this larger proportion of Eagle Creek is also, uh, the capstone to the DNR layer program, which we started in twenty thirteen. So in twenty thirteen, the Department and Park Board looked at the erosion on Starkey, uh, Starkey Park and wanted to find a way to address that. So in twenty thirteen, working with a professional, uh, they developed a study to work on those erosion points, create project sites, and ultimately identify the hydrology of Eagle Creek and ways to correct how the stream is flowing today so that it can get to where it naturally wants to be. With two-thirds of a mile of Eagle Creek within Carpenter Nature Preserve, we would have the opportunity to fortify those banks and, uh, reduce all that sediment and all that runoff that could be flowing downstream uh, into our town and ultimately into the drinking water of Seinsville. So this is a huge opportunity to protect, uh, our water resources as they come into our community. And of course, uh, with a potential permanent nature center, as well as just having a, a two hundred and fifteen acre preserve, uh, serving as the capstone to twenty years of nature education in Seinsville. So in twenty sixteen, uh, sorry, twenty thirteen, the, uh, a group of residents, uh, formed the Zion Nature Sanctuary, which is now our Seinsville nature, uh, nature sanctuary inside the library. For the past twenty years, uh, residents have enjoyed, uh, summer camps, interpretive programming, and, uh, being educated by our talented staff of, uh, naturalists. These, the Carpenter Nature Preserve could serve as a permanent home, not only welcoming the families of Seinsville, but as John mentioned, uh, having the opportunity to be a regional draw to our community. So with the Carpenter Nature Preserve and if it hosted a nature center, that would be a regional draw to Seinsville. It would be a tourist destination. And if you don't believe me, just look at the numbers of Connor Prairie Eagle, uh, Creek Park. So, uh, Connor Prairie sees about four hundred thousand people a year. And Eagle Creek, of course, being the third or fourth largest municipally owned park, sees about one point two million visitors a year. So an incredible influx of ecotourism that seeks out these spots, especially the more protected, the more enhanced, the more, uh, special they are. And of course, as mentioned with the White Oaks Common, we have the opportunity for public-private partnerships. If you go to Lincoln Park on a weekend, uh, anytime in the summer, you're likely to run into a wedding ceremony. Um, there's just limited venues in this area. And, uh, we are happy to have that in the village, but having the potential to have a new venue or a new small market, um, in rural Seinsville could be a real draw one day for that portion of Union Township. So in the master planning process, we asked our community, uh, how, how are we going to accomplish this? How do you want to achieve this? So that one of the questions were, how would you like the town to pay for acquiring the property? And as you can see from the chart, obviously, a combination of private and public funds was the most requested, utilizing the existing budget. And then third, uh, municipal bonds. Um, oh, sorry, I skipped over donations and fundraising because that's always the nicest. And then finally, uh, new taxes or fees is the lowest entry. Um, so changing the question, once acquiring the land, how would you like the town to pay for developing the parks? And as you can see, a very similar trend, but of note that municipal bonds were appreciated for both acquisition as well as development. After presentation of the Carpenter Nature Preserve Master Plan last May with you all.
I have a quick question for you. Can you go back to the previous slide? And I was on, I, I was fortunate to be a part of that planning process. But, um, so again, existing budget, municipal bonds, new taxes, donation and fundraising, and then private and public funds. And I know you've done a lot of heavy lifting to secure public government-focused grants. Where would you put that? Would you consider that donations or fundraising? Or, um, just trying to figure out like, is that really, maybe that should have been asked as a separate question as far as grants. I just, was trying to figure out, because that's a big chunk of how we will end up paying for this.
Absolutely. Um, so I would, I would put grants in with donations and fundraising, because it's always nice to receive quote-unquote free money. There's obviously always strings attached. Um, the combination of private and public funds, I'd say is exactly what we're doing as well, with the carpenters being such good partners and offering the, uh, donation of a bargain sale price. And of course, this request is beyond the existing budget and cash reserves of the Parks Department. That is why we are exploring the municipal bond today. And of course, adding a new park of, of this caliber will require resources. And we don't want to extend all of our resources into one park, because we do have to take care of the entire park system. Uh, when I was, um, applying for this job, John Stare asked me, you know, which is more important, creating new parks or maintaining what you have? And I thought my answer was correct with fifty-fifty. You have to not only take care of what you have and keep your brand, but continue to expand and offer services for your community. Uh, he reminded me that I was wrong and it's actually a hundred percent, a hundred percent, but. Just wanted to reiterate that, uh, even though we are very excited about this opportunity, we will continue to keep our existing park system at the level of surface enjoyed today. Did that answer your question, uh, Counselor Burke?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, probably should have maybe carved it out as a question, but I mean, um, it's important to know that it is part of a comprehensive holistic funding strategy.
Um, after the presentation of the master planning, uh, document last, uh, spring to you all, I believe it was you, Counselor Burke, that wanted to ask specifically, how many of our residents are in favor of a bond, since that seemed to be the direction we were going? So we asked that question specifically. Um, and in relation to the, uh, after the master planning process, asking that question, we had a thousand and ten responses with sixty-five percent saying yes and eighty-seven percent saying yes with the right conditions. So I think that's a pretty good standard for getting a thousand people to agree upon something.
When was this survey done, Jared? I forget.
It was, uh, done between social media as well as our Parks Newsletter.
Sorry, when?
When. Um, it was right after presentation in May twenty twenty-two, so the summer of twenty twenty-two.
Jared, you have, you have a number on, on the sheets or on the, the, uh, slide says, are you a Seinsville resident? Do you have any indication how many of those thousand folks were Seinsville residents and who weren't?
I believe it was all but three percent when we presented that last time.
Thank you.
Uh, back to the timeline. So May eleventh, the Carpenter Master Plan findings were presented to the Park Board. And as I mentioned, May sixteenth presented to you all of this council. Uh, July thirteenth, the Park Board began the, with a declaratory resolution to explore bonding for the Carpenter Nature Preserve in the amount not to exceed five point three million. That request was bought before this council last August. And at that time, there was determined that there was additional information that was going to be required. So we, uh, have been spending our time since then collecting that information to present to you tonight as well. So updates to the project since we've last spoke on this. The Parks Department initiated an updated appraisal last October. One of the outlined questions was the moving target of what would the acquisition cost be? So the preserve appraised for six million, twenty thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two, last November. Previously, two years prior, that was five point six million. Uh, so already you can see that the value of the land, as, as you indicated, would continue to increase. The carpenters have agreed to a bargain sale price of four point five two million. And an option to purchase the agreement has been executed by the Park Board and carpenters. So in that option, we outlined this specific price and the Park Board has until the end of this year to, uh, acquire the land or begin closing on the land or the offer's off the table.
Is the four point five million include the half a million for upkeep?
Uh, no, that is separate. Yep. Another, uh, item requested to know more about, and the last time we spoke about this, was where this falls in the larger priority of our park system. So we have the information back from our five-year master plan that was conducted throughout all of last year. And I wanted to present the six, uh, key findings that just kept popping up in public engagement sessions. The first of which would be the big four rail trail connections. Our community loves their connectivity in their trails and they want more options to get to it. So we are continuing to identify opportunities where we can connect neighborhoods and communities to our big four rail trail. Not just the big four rail trail, but they also want more trail. Not just the big four rail trail, but they also want more trail connections to parks. So fortunately, the majority of our parks are on the rail trail, but definitely not all of them. So as opportunities come to explore partnerships and working with development to create those pathways, we'll continue to find ways to get to our parks for our residents. The third item was the Carpenter Nature Preserve. It's interesting to note that this was one of the most wrote in responses to the public engagement session. So we didn't artificially suss this out. It kind of rose to the top through conversations with our community. Additionally, it continued to be brought up in the public engagement sessions that we held in this building and virtually. The fourth item is a community center or aquatic center. And through the five-year master plan and speaking with the park board, we understand this item has been on our planning surveys for the past 15 years. And when we talk about a public recreation facility, there is a large price tag with that. And that is exponentially larger when you add an aquatic component to that. So while the Parks Department will always champion for indoor recreation and find opportunities to explore that, we understand that that initiative alone is too large for our department, even beyond our full bonding capacity. So in order for a community center to happen, it's going to take the full cooperation of a mayor's administration, a town council, and our departments working together, either as a public entity or with a private partner to make that happen. So we wanted to fully explain that to our community as it's brought up for the third time in the past 15 years in this master planning process. The last two items, interesting of note, additional park amenities. So people just continue to want a place to sit down or go to the bathroom. And if my legacy with Zionsville Parks is to be the restroom superintendent, then I will embrace that. And finally, even though the majority of our parks are natural and passive, the community has a thirst for more additional natural parks. So the Carpenter Nature Preserve would certainly satisfy one-third of the six items listed before you this evening. Continuing on the timeline, those findings from the five-year master plan were presented to the park board at the end of the year, as well as this council in January. And during those meetings, the park board restarted the bonding process with a new declaratory resolution of preliminary determination to issue bonds passed by the park board. February 8th, they held two public hearings in association with the additional appropriation request, as well as the bond request. And again, as John mentioned, there was no remonstrance noted. So those resolutions were passed at the park board, which brought it before you all this evening. So the bond request has remained the same for the past two years, and that is to acquire the land and get it shelf ready for development. So tonight's request is for 5.5 million for the acquisition and development of the Carpenter Nature Preserve. 4.55 of that would go towards acquisition and any closing costs or unexpected fees. And those remaining half a million out of that kind of 5 million. So with a $5.5 million bond, we're anticipating up to a half million of that to be capitalized interest, since we're not on a funding cycle right now with the tax base. So half a million of that would go towards capitalized interest and the other five would be towards the park system.
So you're expecting only 30K in closing costs on a five and a half million dollar bond, is that correct?
Yeah, approximately. Working with our inside counsel, we think we can dodge some of those fees. And those remaining fees, again, going to, or sorry, funds from the bond would go towards engineering surveys and construction documents to truly get the project shelf ready, should an opportunity come forward. So this is what phase one construction would be like. Our terminology is a little out of whack since in the master plan, phase one was acquisition and phase two was construction. So we're breaking up that phase two into multiple chunks. And as opportunities as funds become available, we'll explore those items within that phase two of construction. So phase one is simply to get the park open to our community to begin enjoying. So refabbing the entrance drive, as well as creating a secondary drive that leads to a restroom facility, creating an accessible path, as well as rustic trails, leaving the structures on site, but putting a fencing around them so to limit any interaction between our residents and those structures, as well as just doing some habitat restoration, removing the invasives that were among the first species to take back over once the golf course closed its operations and working on replantings.
Hey, Jared.
Yes.
Earlier in the presentation, you told us phase one was just the land acquisition and the construction documents. Is that here you're saying phase one, i- is construction actual construction? Or is this just, when you're saying phase one construction plans, you were just talking about the plans. This is not the actual construction to fulfill any of this. Is that a correct statement?
Correct. So those phase one construction plans would provide this, construction documents for what you see before you.
Got it.
So I'll invite members of Crow up to kind of talk through the numbers and the specifics of this bond request.
Good evening, councillors. Becca Zakowski with Crow Municipal Advisor to the town. I'll go over the next few slides related to the specific bond request. This slide here shows the maximum parameters adopted by the park board. So the maximum principal amount that may be issued is the five and a half million that's been mentioned throughout the presentation. And that will go to fund project costs, capitalized interest, as Jared mentioned, and cost of issuing the bonds. The maximum interest rate that was approved was 5%. We hope to obviously get lower than that.
Can you, don't me interrupt on that, but that point was interesting to me for two reasons. One is I don't see that maximum in what we're approving. But two is, like, the federal funds rate right now is 4.75 to 5%. And we had a credit rating lowered two notches here recently. I am surprised, given interest rates at a federal level, that we could borrow at or even potentially below what the federal government is issuing debt at. Can you, what is the confidence of that?
Um, so I just pulled the double A, which the town has rated a double A. The 20-year borrowing wait, borrowing wait rate, sorry, for municipal debt is around a 3.3%. So I think we're pretty confident in that five, and that would be all in borrowing costs.
So that you said, when you said you pulled it, is that like based off of recent?
That is.
Equal comparable Indiana municipalities with the same bond rating that have recently floated that?
Um, so that's actually based on the, it's the triple A, well, sorry, double A municipal market data index rate that gets updated each day. And that's based on deals that have priced in the market.
I've pulled the same information earlier today. It was about three and a half percent.
Okay, so that was surprising to me that we could borrow at that rate.
Pretty good tax benefits to the.
Yeah, I know it's triple tax free, so I mean, I get it, but okay. But should that rate then, I'm glad to hear that, should that rate be reflected in what we're approving? Does it not matter because it's been approved somewhere else? I see the amount in what we're proving, but I don't see this 5% cap.
Um, I believe because the park board adopted it, then that's, I think, all that needed to happen, I would defer to legal.
Well, what we have is the actual ordinance approving the bond, so it's not in what was prepared for us. I don't know if Heather James is here or not. Is she with us? Because she prepared it. She would be better probably. Oh, Heather, I saw you a minute ago. I thought I saw you.
Lisa, can you go up to the mic? I'm sorry, just so that folks watching online can hear you.
They may know better than I would.
Sorry, my name is Lisa Lee. I'm with Ice Miller. I'm here in place of Heather James as bond counsel. The, the actual issuer of the bonds and the bond resolution is approved by the park board. So all of the terms of the bonds must be in the park board resolution. The statute then requires the town council to also approve the fact that the park board is going to issue the bonds. And there are no parameters that are required in that ordinance. So what you have is the maximum issuance amount. But we still could not go above the 5% or the parameters, the 20 years, the 5% interest that was approved by the park board.
If that resolution, if this was approved by the, this council and that resolution was modified by the Parks Board, would then have to come back again in front of this council for approval. If, if suddenly they said, oh, we'll do maximum of 6%. I just want to make sure I know.
Yeah, if they increase any of their parameters, if they don't stay within their maximum parameters, they would have to come back and get new approval from the council.
Okay, thank you. That's exactly what I want to know.
And then the maximum term, the bonds can't exceed 20 years. So that's around 2042, final maturity. And then they will be secured or repaid by property taxes levied in, within the park district, and that's coterminous with the town. And then the purpose, as already mentioned, to fund project costs, capitalized interests, and cost of issuing the bonds. This next slide goes over the debt issuance limitation that the park district has. And again, coterminous with the town. It is 2% of, one-third of the net assessed value in the park district. The park district does have a separate debt limitation outside of the town. And then the only bonds that are subject to that limitation issued by the park board now are the 2019 Series B and Series C bonds. If we include the 2023 proposed bonds, the issuance margin remaining for future projects is around that $13.6 million that you see.
Can you clarify, what is the bond capacity or bond limit of parks?
So it's the 26, 26.5 million that you see right there. It's 2% of one-third of the net assessed value of the Parks District, and the Parks District is coterminous with the town.
And Jared, I mean, I think Jared and I have talked about this, but are there, are there not also bonds that are set to expire? And when are those set to expire?
The existing 2019 bonds will mature in 2039.
2039. You, you just mentioned, you just mentioned that how we come, how we decide how much bonding capacity we have. Could you repeat that?
Yep. So it's based on the net assessed value in that Parks District.
And the Parks District is equal to the town of Zionsville boundaries.
Correct.
Right now.
Correct.
Thank you.
On this slide, just an overview of the pay 23 municipal tax rate that the town has adopted. As I mentioned, the bonds will be secured or repaid by a new property tax. And we estimate that is about a one cent per $100 of net assessed value. This won't be levied until next year, so pay 24. And then, as an example, for a $500,000 home, claiming the mortgage deduction, a homestead deduction and a supplemental deduction, that equals about $35 annually. And then this next slide just gives you a comparison of the town's tax rate, comparing it to neighboring communities. As you can see, the town's tax rate is very small compared to most of the neighboring communities around Zionsville. And even with the addition of this new tax rate is still much lower.
So that has always been the request of this bond, is to get us the land as well as a shelf-ready project, should opportunities come. And, and those opportunities have become, began to knock at our door. So we've excited the community with this opportunity, but we've also caught the attention of the state. So the Next Level Conservation Trust grant opportunity was an initiative of Governor Holcomb. This was to create and preserve and protect important conservation, recreation, and historical areas throughout Indiana. It was a three-to-one matching program. And there was only one round. There won't be a second round of this Next Level Conservation Fund. So we truly got in at the right moment with this project to be awarded $3 million. So with the Next Level Conservation Trust, there are a couple of parameters of that grant. One being that the property has to be open to the public in a reasonable amount of time. When asked what reasonable was, they, they did not define that. So three to five years, that's probably okay. Seven to 10, we might have to have some conversations. So at this time, that requirement is a little vague. But the final requirement of this grant would be that a conservation easement will be placed on the property in perpetuity. So this requirement would make sure that this location is a permanent public park. There could be no other use for it. So with the Next Level Conservation Trust program, we included 173 acres of the site. So there will be 44 acres of the site outside of that conservation easement to be allowed to develop the nature center, White Oaks Common, as well as our maintenance facility. So still having some autonomy on the site, but certainly protecting the most critical component, which is Eagle Creek and the surrounding floodplain areas.
Jared, I know it's, it's vague in terms of reasonable time, but what does it mean to be open? Because as you sort of think through the phasing, if this bond is approved, we acquired the land thanks to the carpenters giving us a discount. And we have come up with a plan and what to do with it. And we're out of money at that point, right? And so I have heard, it's great that we have this grant, right? And, but we don't, it's like a catch 22. We don't get the grant till we open the park, but it takes money to open the park. You get the money back, but the money then isn't necessarily going against the bond that we have issued. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. So can you kind of talk through timing of that? And, and what it, what additional capital it will require to satisfy that?
Absolutely. So as you mentioned, this is a reimbursatory grant. So we would not receive these funds until we've closed on the property. So that is why it is the full amount of a $5.5 million bond, because we do need to utilize those funds on day one for closing. Then upon closing, this $3 million grant reimbursement could head our way. And as you know.
Hold on a second. My understanding was the reimbursement didn't come until the park was open in a reasonable amount of time. So acquiring the ground does not trigger the $3 million, per my understanding. Is, is it a different thing from what you're describing there?
Yes. And speaking with DNR, it's at closing.
And then we do get the money right away.
Yes, yes. Well, right away, you know, working with a government agency to get funds.
That it has to be open.
Well, yeah, okay. So this is where I'm getting confused, right? Like, so we, we issued the bond, closed the ground, June 1st, right? We go back to the Next Level Conservation Trust and say, we've got the ground. Part of it is, it's got to be open in a reasonable amount of time. Does it have to be open to get the money? Or you get the money, and if you aren't open in a reasonable amount of time, you risk having the money clawed back.
Yes, that would be the final condition, very similar to the next grant we'll talk about. There are lasting conditions for accepting this money. Should you violate that, you know, you, you deal with the consequences.
Got it. Okay. So that's good. That's getting it much quicker. I thought we had to be open to get it. Does the $3 million get us to open?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That, that, that's the piece I was missing.
Right. Yep.
Happy to explain that. The other part of open to the public, does that prohibit the town from charging admission?
Yes. So with, well, yes and no. So we can't make money off the land. So we couldn't sell timber and receive funds from that. We couldn't necessarily begin mining it or something like that.
No, I, I mean, charging admission in terms of like what Eagle Creek does to access.
And Connor Prairie, that was my question.
Right. And so we actually do have that capacity because we carved out that 44 acres at the entrance. That would be outside of these, the acres that are within this grant program. So only 173 acres of the grant, of the parcel would be within this program. So technically we could, however, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth, so I'll just stop there.
Well, well, no, that's going to be my next question. So can that $3 million be used towards the non-173 acres?
Yes, yes. There's no strings attached for that 3 million. Cleared that up with them as well.
Just to clarify, Jared, so the 44 acres that are set aside for that programming, people would have to pay, they potentially could pay fees to use those facilities. But for the rest of it, which is just trails and everything else, unlike Eagle Creek, you, you could not charge just to come into the park to use the trails, only for the extra amenities that are part of the 44 acres for programming.
That's correct. And we, and we, we created it that way so that should a nature center come on, we would be able to charge admission to get into that facility. Now, we can still have paid programming in the park, you know, because those funds are received in a different capacity. in a different capacity. It's not necessarily up to land. It's the program. So still having our capacities to, uh, generate revenue.
Right, right. But the point being, you wouldn't have to just pay to come into the park to use the trails.
Correct. And I would actually try to find every way we can to not do that. I think parks should be accessible to everyone and let's find opportunities where it makes sense to have fees and where not.
No, that's a great clarifier. Thank you.
Is that 44 acres include a potential indoor facility for like a pool or all that kind of stuff that you were talking about earlier?
It could, but, um, working with the carpenters closely, uh, they have certain parameters they want as they envision this with us. And we've, we've understood those since day one. So this is not going to be a site for a sports complex or sports fields. It's truly a nature preserve and we'll need to find another spot for those activities.
So that brings actually a good segue into my next question. So with you saying that the carpenters were involved in the partnership and thank you so much to the carpenters for this. Um, what, um, kind of partnership will they have ongoing past this initial part of the project? What are their responsibilities, if any, or any obligations that are stated in this?
Well, uh, just from knowing them, I have a hard time believing they're going to sit on their hands. Um, with that half million they pledged this evening, that would go into the foundation and you know, and pretends potentially provide an endowment every year for upkeep of the facility. Uh, you know, taking care of, uh, invasive species with, uh, professional services, which allows us to utilize our local funds in another direction if that need is already satisfied. So, um, their capacity moving forward, you know, once the, the dotted line is signed, they could, they could pack their bags and go, but I just don't think they will. I think they'll stay involved.
But formally.
You guys staying involved. Thank you very much.
So you, you might cover this later. This was my question. So until it's able to be used by the public, how much will it take to maintain it a year?
Negligible. Uh, if we're not open to the public, you know, if there's a tree that's near a neighbor, we need to address that. But truly, we're going to let nature continue to be nature. And the first people that'll get to access this site in a formal capacity would be the contractors team to work, uh, once the, the bid is signed. So we're not looking to open this up in the state it's in. There would be plenty of safety concerns and lots of unknowns. And we just don't have the infrastructure or the resources to take care of that right now, day one.
It, Jared, I, I hate creating unexpected liabilities for the town related to funding for a grant, right? Is there, I, I, I think I heard you say earlier that this $3 million kind of goes into the parks fund, but doesn't necessarily have to be earmarked towards this. Um, is there a way to structure that grant so that until the park is open, the money has to go be, go towards getting it open? Cause the last thing you want to have happen is new council, new mayor, whatever, there's a new shiny object that $3 million is gone. The park is no closer to being open. The state says, well, the park's not open. We want $3 million back and suddenly we're in a budget hole in five years. I, I don't know if there's a way to structure that and, and, but it would make me feel better, I think, if there was kind of, we put the obligation back on you that that grant that comes in has to get us to, to opening, whether it's a million, two million, three million from there. The parks board can figure out what to do with it, but, um, I, I would just, you know, once we have this ground, I'd want that funding to go towards it. If that's sort of the expectation here that of, of the financial formula, if that makes sense.
I would have to talk to Cindy Poor, but, um, I wonder if the fund could be created in a way, cause we don't have this fund yet. This would be a new creation of a fund to receive the bond. Could be created in a way that revenues into that fund can only be used expressly for that project.
Yes, I think that'd be helpful or even just until the park is open. And then if there's another priority, as long as we've satisfied the grant, there's not going to be a, a callback, then you know, there may be different priorities at that point. I don't want to get in the way of that, but I would just want us, I'd want that money to get us to park opening versus, you know, we all forget about it for some reason and six years get a bill from the state for $3 million bucks.
That's fair. Uh, I'll research that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, in, in next question on the next level, uh, grant. So this is a three to one matching program and I know that the next grant is a one-to-one matching, 50/50 matching as well.
So what's our local match for this one?
We need to raise a million dollars somehow.
Nope. Uh, so again, the gift of the carpenters keeps on giving. So the bargain sale price that we're getting from their pledged donation served as our local match. So it required no local funds out of pocket. So truly just $3 million coming in and none coming out from our capacity.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't understand that.
Uh, moving on to our second grant, this is the land and water conservation fund. Uh, we have a history in our park system with this grant. Uh, we're eligible up to three times in an eight-year period. Um, and we were also selected for this one. Um, for a 50/50 grant for the development of phase one. So this would be a half a million dollars towards that actual construction. And again, this is reimbursatory. So we would not receive these funds until the project started and then we'd get those back.
Is there any restriction on those funds, Jared, outside of just having to be spent within the park itself? It doesn't have to be for like, uh, uh, creek bed restoration or anything like that. We can choose how to do that.
We can and did. So within the grant application, it only took a couple of items and that half million was used up pretty quick.
Great.
Um, so this is a federal program administered by the state. It does come with a section six, uh, classification for the warranty deed restriction. So this is actually less restrictive in air quotes than our next level program because should there be any taking of this property with this restriction, we would just have to create the equivalent somewhere else. But the next level doesn't allow any taking of it. So that's why it's so important to carve out what we anticipate for the future. Um, and that's why we set aside those 44 acres. We actually just experienced what I'm talking about. Sorry. Um, with overly warm and park with the, uh, NDOT project looking to widen 465 and 865. We actually changed the, the parameter line of that uh, warranty deed since we were still an active grant and had time to close. So we were able to anticipate up to 150 feet of overly warm and park should NDOT need to acquire that. So we won't be required to create a sliver of park somewhere else per section six. And finally, this grant, um, is no doing of our, our own. This was actually the carpenters that began this conversations with the in swamp program. So DNR works with our developing community in lieu of, uh, developer disturbing a wetland and replacing it on the site of their project, maybe in a lower quality. Um, they can pay a credit, um, to the state and then the state actually utilizes those credits to create high-quality habitat for projects very similar to this. So those credits can only be used in certain regions of the state where the development is occurring. And fortunately for us in this scenario, our, our part of the state is very active with development. So the Eagle Creek corridor, which if you look on this graphic is the black dotted line that's on 50 feet of each side of Eagle Creek within this photo. And the, uh, the fingers coming off the main creek, those would be a component of this grant and are these credits. So DNR would manage this project in tandem with ours, completely separate. Um, would provide restoration work within those kinds, within those, uh, project bounds, 50 feet on each side. And what that would do, very similar to the DNR, DNR layer program that we're doing in Starkey would find where the hydrology of Eagle Creek wants to go, repair those areas where we're seeing a lot of erosion and also remove the invasives and replant with natives. So truly setting, uh, within the project bounds, uh, the waterway as healthy as they can. So that project would not utilize the full $4 million. So again, this grant would kind of be on autopilot administered and, uh, developed by the DNR. And then any residual funds would be put into a, a maintenance fund for up to 10 years for us to utilize to uh, go back within those conservation easements to repair that. So it's about a third of the park. When you think about it, um, logistically, that could be maintained by this, uh, in swamp program for up to 10 years.
Jared, do they, do they, um, transfer dollars to you to facilitate that? Or is this just something they pay for? And what's the, what's the perceived value in your opinion of annually of what that would save the town?
Oh goodness. Um, I haven't crunched that number, but extremely large when one of our layer projects, which is just putting some stones into, uh, Eagle Creek to help with hydrology or, uh, fixing a bank, you know, those are 60, 80, $120,000 projects. So to do that grand of a scale on two-thirds of a mile, you know, that's a pretty significant investment. So we're talking about millions, but probably low millions.
Right.
So to even have a million dollars at the end of their project to, to contract with ecological services to keep the invasives out. Or if a erosion problem does start up, to have a contractor come in, to not have to fund that from our local resources is a huge victory for
Yeah.
uh, maintaining this park.
It's incredible.
Now, the, uh, restrictions with this grant, so again, this is no local match or anything like that. There's no, uh, dollar amount that we'll receive from this, but is the equivalent of four million credits that would go to work on this. And then the leftover funds, I guess, would be funds that we would receive, but could only be utilized within that, similar to how you mentioned earlier, counselor Garrett. So with this grant, uh, within those dotted black lines, that would be placed into a conservation easement. And it cannot be disturbed except for outdoor recreation. So people can still fish along it. And, you know, launch their boats and things like that, but they can't really disturb the plantings or things like that, nor would we want them to. Um, so we worked very closely with DNR to ensure that every bridge crossing was purposeful and had enough setbacks that should we need to widen that bridge, we're going to have the capacity to do that in 50, 100 years. So kind of a timeline of, uh, the opportunities before us with these grants, as well as, uh, your consideration of the bond request tonight. Um, with acquisition of the preserve, assuming the bond passes, uh, we would work to close on the preserve and begin those planning documents, as I mentioned. So, uh, this is a high estimate, again, trying to be as conservative as we can with these numbers to ensure we have proper funding. Uh, um, about 4.5, uh, 450,000 for construction, surveying, design permitting. And then the construction estimate for phase one was anywhere between 3.4 and 3.8. So, um, we're not at this level just yet, but as we enter those contracts, should we enter those contracts for construction design, I truly want to be on the ground finding what resources on the site are still, uh, of good quality. So are we tearing out the parking lot when we can save it and just simply resurface it? So truly allowing the available funds we would have to go as far as we can.
Jared, and I'm splitting here, Sierra and I apologize, but like earlier, again, you called phase one acquisition and construction docs and then phase two infrastructures. Is what you're talking about here with phase one construction estimate, phase two, what you referred to earlier?
Yes. So, uh, I, I mentioned that slightly, but we should probably call this phase 2.1, maybe.
Okay.
Something like that.
So, no, that's okay. So in phase two had an estimate, your estimate of four to $6 million. This is slightly under four. Does that mean there are other sub-phases of phase two that are not included in this phase two construction estimate? And what is not, what are we not getting that was listed in phase two originally? Can you talk to that a little bit?
Absolutely. So there, you know, it's truly what we wanted to do with phase one, understanding that there would be limited funding should we receive these grants was something that we could fit within that scope while still making it a public park. So phase one is going to get the accessible routes, the rustic trails and give people the opportunity to explore. But we're not necessarily going to have the bells and whistles day one of a boardwalk or the canopy walk or definitely the nature center and items like that. So I feel that, uh, with the excitement around this project, um, and our partners in the community, we can find funding partners for some of those. And we are more than happy to explore naming rights for the so-and-so ample theater or the so-and-so boardwalk. Um, so again, exploring every opportunity we have, but, uh, understanding that they won't be there on day one.
And then, so if the phase one estimate's 3.5, 3.8 million, is 3.5 of that, the two grants you talked about, the next little, so we, we, you parks board has to come up with the extra 300 grand effectively to, to get over the hump. Is that?
Well, and, and, you know, construction bids, our estimates usually come in pretty close, but there's always, you know, with this market right now, it's always a little higher. So uh, we haven't spoke about impact fees yet, but since 2012, the park system has been collecting impact fees and those can only be utilized in very certain settings. And once you build enough of that amenity, you can't use those funds for anything more. So our strategy with the 2023 master plan is understanding those funds fully and utilizing them in every project we can. So we've identified close to $400,000, uh, dollars worth of amenities in phase one, phase 2.1 that we could implement impact fees.
Got it.
And again, uh, as I mentioned, utilizing things that are still in good condition to save money. We don't need to replace something that's like new. If it can serve for five to 10 years, especially knowing that a nature center or White Oaks Common is in the future and it could be bundled at that time when it truly gets to end of life.
Jared, before we go too far from this previous slide about the DNR program with the bank restoration. So what's the obligation to do this? Is this connected to the $500,000 grant or the $3 million grant? Or is it separate altogether? Cause you, you kind of, yeah, it sounds like it's separate and we don't have to do that.
Correct. Yes. So, uh, this is just an opportunity and it would kind of be on autopilot because we wouldn't necessarily receive funds that could help with the other infrastructure, but it would restore everything within its project limits and then leave an existing fund that could fund improvements uh, within 50 feet of Eagle Creek each direction.
So, so should this get bonded, we get the purchase, the acquisition? Who makes the decision to do this, uh, program? Is it strictly within the parks board? Or is it again, something that comes to the council since the council approved the purchase or the acquisition of the land?
I believe it would be a park board decision. Uh, they place the restrictions with the land, water conservation fund and other grants. So I believe that's within their, uh, stewardship of those properties. And again, this is a, a state program. So the, uh, specifications were wrote by the Indiana, uh, Department of Natural Resources, um, to create this program. So looking at that timeline, um, as those funds come in from the next level conservation, that is when we could truly begin phase one construction. And as phase one construction started, that's when we could be reimbursed for the half a million or, you know, the half a million as well. So truly looking at about 3.5 million available day one for this construction project.
Just a cash flow question. Is it a reimbursement or is a grant that is sitting in a bank account that we're paying out of and just telling them what we reimburse it? Do we have to float the cash and then wait for it to come in?
Yes, but with the land, water program, it's, um, you can report it anytime. So as we get those amenities done, we get the reimbursement pretty quickly. It's within a couple of months turnaround. So it's not the same commitment as, you know, waiting on.
So, uh, this, this, let's start with the $3 million week closing land. Do we have a $3 million reimbursable credit we can apply towards? Or do we have $3 million that's sitting in the bank at that point?
$3 million from the bank.
Okay. So that's the big one. This, the 500,000, that's the one that's the more reimbursable one.
Yeah.
You, the parks board feels confident, you can kind of manage vendors, cash flow, whatnot towards cash in, cash out, reimbursement back from the state, estimated processing time of that reimbursement, things like that.
Yes, uh, just because we just did it with overly warm and those, that grant was closed out before the project.
Okay.
Jared, since you're wrapping up, I'm not sure where to ask various questions. Uh, but I certainly want to thank everybody who are diligently hanging with us, uh, as we ask questions. I'm always impressed uh, by the folks in this town. So I know it's been long, so bear with us to ask more questions. But then this, this is in no way takes anything away from what you presented, but, but I have a question on the assessed value of this property is at $6 million. And in no way is, you know, am I comparing that to what the benefits might be, but there are assessed taxes that are coming to the town and they're not all town, um, assets. There are also other units like schools, for example, and I don't know, and maybe this is a crow question or a Cindy question, but um, what are we currently bringing in on the tax assessment at a $6 million assessed value? And how will that impact units of government that might count on those dollars? I'm assuming it's a 1% tax at this point. I don't know. Do you have the answer to that question or Crowe might have the answer to that question?
Um,
just, I'm concerned about the liability of like schools or whatever on terms of, uh, revenue that might disappear.
I don't have that answer with me right now. I can find that and, um, let you know.
I mean, if you, if, and I'm, I'm not giving you the answer, but if you look at page 32 of this presentation, the net assessed value was 3.971 billion. So it would be 6 million of 3.971 billion. It's probably immaterial.
Any other questions at the moment?
Um, I'm going to give you a little hard homework assignment because we have two, this is a, a double vote, right? A vote this meeting and if passed the next vote. Um, I, I have in the past and to some degree still am a little critical of the amount of spending that has been going on in parks recently. And accountability towards that and ROI towards that. I know that you came to this council. I know that you came to this council a few meetings ago and asked for six hundred thousand dollars for pickleball courts. Because it was forgotten in the budget request for twenty twenty three, which we approved. I believe there is another even bigger ask coming here soon for trail work and trail work rated higher than this. In your survey, it would be helpful to understand all of the asks coming this year. Because i- if I vote for this and I'm leaning towards it, given the sort of the work done and the price to pay. It gets harder to keep also voting for additional appropriations as they keep coming. So if if this is the the baby you want, I'm going to be way more critical on more things you want to spend this year. And I just want you to be aware of that. So if you're able to come next meeting with what is your, what is your expectation of other ass? Because we did a lot of work to balance the budget and there were things that were just not caught that are now coming to us as additional appropriations. It just gets harder to keep writing checks, writing appropriations, I should say, on that. So just, just be aware, I'm not, it's not enough of a criticism to hold up the process. But it is part of a overall final vote consideration that I would have in terms of what is it that you want? It seems like Parks Department wants a lot and I get it. It's easy to ask the public, do you want a park? And they say, yes, I want a new park too, but I just want to make sure we are not overshooting here. Especially with additional obligations that will come with opening this new park with other appropriations that are drawing down balances.
Absolutely. I'll have that for you.
Thank you.
So as construction begins, as I mentioned, the half million reimbursement and then the DNR project, project would work in tandem, but completely separate on the site. But again, offering an opportunity for one disturbance rather than two separate projects. And then with the anticipation of the park opening late two thousand twenty five or early two thousand twenty six, I'm going to point much more towards that two thousand twenty six. And speaking with the wisdom of Zionsville's previous park boards, everything's always going to cost more money than you thought. And everything's going to take longer than you thought. So just want to continue to manage expectations throughout this project. So with phase two point one construction done, this is what our park would look like. Again, with the accessible pathways, as well as an outdoor classroom, restroom facility, parking lot. And just an opportunity for the public to explore the space and begin to create those memories out there.
Jared, I have another question. That's probably a sidebar question. One of the benefits of living in Zionsville is the incredible intelligence of the people who live here. And we get to represent. So they ask me questions I don't have the answers to. This might be a, may be a question for Ice Miller. As you've heard, this is going to be a vote tonight, and then there'll be a second vote on this from this council. So, but one question I've had is, why would this not be considered a controlled project? In terms of changing the process and making it a lengthier process for more public input? And when, 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 or would that not qualify? Just to help me understand to better answer that question in case anyone were to ask.
It's all about the threshold for what size of project it had to be. Five point eight for twenty twenty two. So it's, it's all about the size of the project. You're only at five and a half million, even though it is payable from a property tax levy. It's still below the threshold for petition remonstrance, if that's what you're.
Right.
Asking about.
It's close, right? And I just didn't know what all was all, all in what counts.
Six for twenty three. I don't have that exact number. It's about six point two or six point.
So we're just under the threshold.
And you're five point five.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Thank you for that.
Of course, having a brand new park is fantastic, but you certainly have to have the resources to have, keep it again, taking care of your brand while taking care of the new and shiny. So we've done a preliminary estimate of those operational costs for day one. So from our five year master plan staffing study, we did have a consultant look at staffing of various parks of this size. And kind of determine what staffing levels would be required for operations. So within the five year master planning study, it recommended two full time staff, three part time staff and three seasonal staff. So understanding our team's ability to accomplish tasks as well as how much of this park will remain natural. I feel confident we could accomplish similar, if not this, better results from that full team with two full time natural resource technicians. And a allowance of part time maintenance around forty thousand. So forty thousand would give us one dedicated part time position all year. As well as a seasonal hire throughout the summer. So as season peaks. And understanding we can accomplish this slightly lower staffing level because we utilize our volunteers so often. As we began to introduce this concept of the Carpenter Nature Preserve to the public. We began receiving emails almost immediately from school groups wishing to get out there. And last year we had over two thousand hours of volunteer work in our park system. So the equivalent of one full time position, helping us maintain our, our natural spaces. So I have full confidence that Zionsville will continue to answer that call. And we can rely on a, a, a steady flow of volunteers to help us take care of this park.
And Jared, this is for once it's open.
Yes. So thi- this would not be required in the next two fun budgeting cycles. This would be day one of operations. And I will say that with that number, obviously, it is subject to pay increases, inflation, healthcare costs and things like that. So I don't have a forecast for what that changes, but.
Right.
Within reason. And again, for operational costs, so sitting down with our director of maintenance, looking over the site, understanding what equipment we have and what equipment we would need to purchase. We're looking about a hundred and twelve thousand for one time purchases. That's going to be the mowers. It's going to be the, the, the tractor or the chipper. Maintain the site. Once we have a dedicated maintenance staff there. And looking at our park system as a whole, anticipating around twenty seven, five hundred for annual supplies and services. Now a portion of that would be restoration work. So again, with the carpenter's gift of that foundation endowment, there would be the potential to. Use our local resources in a different direction if that need is satisfied. And we're only going to be able to tighten up this number. In twenty twenty two, we introduced a work order system, maintain X with our Parks Department. And the amount of information you can plug into that and pull out in an annual report. Last year, we only had half a year. So truly twenty twenty three will be our base data. And we're going to be able to understand how many supplies it takes at our new trailhead facility or, or Mulberry Fields restroom. And equivalently, we're going to be able to look at Turkeyfoot and understand what is the maintenance need of a passive park. So putting those models together, we're going to be able to get one of the best pictures for this preserve as well as future park requests and operations. So looking at the operational budget again, rough timeline of twenty twenty six. Anticipating with one time cost as well as the annual staffing, about three hundred and twenty nine thousand. And after that first year, looking at approximately two hundred and seventeen to two hundred and fifty thousand for reoccurring staffing and supplies. So if we do our due diligence with the construction project, utilizing park impact fees where we can, utilizing donations where we can. I believe we have the opportunity to use that three million dollars, a small portion of that, to fund year one of operations. I don't think that's unrealistic to find the project so that we can fit within those parameters or at least come exceptionally close. So in summary, tonight for your consideration is the bond request for five point five million. With the approval of that bond, we would be creating the first park in Union Township in the future, as well as the largest preserved space in Boone County. And funding the, the capstone to the, the Zionsville Parks history. Now, upon the approval of that bond and closing on that property, we unlock nine million dollars of outside funding. And that's through the in swamp program, the land water, the next level, as well as the carpenter's donation. Additionally, we have partners built into the community on day one. So the Zionsville Parks Foundation, as I mentioned. Once the property is owned by the town, that will remove the carpenters as the stewards of that land. Coincidentally, Nancy also serves on the foundation and there was a conflict of interest for fundraising. So once that conflict is resolved, the full capacity of the Parks Foundation would be able to be. Released, released onto the Carpenter Nature Preserve as well as our entire park system. So for the past two years, the foundation has been funding our programming and purchasing memorial benches and trees and really making their presence known in the park system already.
Jared, how much, what was the current balance in the Parks Foundation?
That would be a question for one of their board members. And I feel sensitive to that one just because we don't audit our Little League or the rugby teams or the Optimist Club that also help our park system. But I understand if we're asking for a heavy lean on them, there's a little bit more.
Yeah, I get it. And I didn't know if it was even a fair question, but I was just super curious.
Yep.
Because it's directly tied to your future operational.
Right.
Options.
And I believe they did release an annual report or they will be soon. So.
Right.
That is all I have in the presentation for you all tonight. Thank you for bearing with me as I unloaded all that information on you. And I'm happy to answer any questions with the bond counsel or myself.
Thank you, Jared. Are there any questions from counselors?
That's most of mine.
Yeah, I think a lot of the questions I had were answered too. I mean, I, I think, I will, I will say this, I mean, we've gotten, you know, a few emails and I've had a number of conversations with folks. Around town, whether it's at parties or knocking on doors or whatever it is. You know, I think this property is very unique. I think it's certainly a, a, a interesting opportunity. In, in district two, is the sentiment that I continue to get. Is most of the folks in district two would, would rather. Get on a bicycle and ride twenty minutes into the village and have lunch, use a public restroom. Stop by the grocery store on the way home and ride the bicycles back, back down Oak Street. That's been something that I've communicated with the mayor a few times on. She said it was a priority of hers for the last three years and it, and it continues to get. Pushed, pushed to the back burner. So the concerns that I get from folks isn't the nineteen cents, you know, tax increase. It's the, does this just make this a little, push this a little bit further away? Are we ever going to get this done? And, and, and I've just, the conversations that I've had with folks, that's, that's typically the direction that goes. As opposed to driving ten, fifteen minutes north to a nature preserve, they'd rather ride a bicycle in the village. So that's just from, from my perspective with my district, I wanted to make sure counselors, you guys were aware of that respect.
Just to provide some input on, when I ran for this position in twenty nineteen. Two comments stood out and this was way before the Carpenter, Carpenter Nature Center was even contemplated. Two comments stood out. One was that people lived here because of, one, the school district, which we have very little say into. And the second was a little surprise to me, and that was commenting on our park system. That, that still remained a priority of the voters and the residents, one of the same, but the residents as they. As I've had conversation with them before. Before I entered into a meeting this afternoon, I had forty two emails all supporting this. And I've probably gotten another dozen and a half in the hour and a half that I was in my meeting this afternoon. It's, it's a very unique proposition and I've heard nothing but positive feedback from overall, the whole district that I cover, which is all of Zionsville. So it's, you know, from my standpoint, this is a unique opportunity. I've had the pleasure of touring the nature center without getting bitten by ticks. Thank you to the conferter. Neither did he. And John was with us when we did that. John is there. Yeah, John came prepared. I don't think we were as, yeah. But it was, it's a, it's an incredible, incredible piece of property. And I don't believe that this is something that I would be okay with passing up at this point.
Well, I came prepared to really rally the troops behind you, but you did a great job. So I don't feel like I have to do a whole lot. This is district one. This is in almost literally my backyard. And, you know, I, I stood firmly against the neighborhood that was proposed there in two thousand and eighteen. And I think seeing what opportunity is in front of us, it was absolutely the right decision then. And because we made the right decision then, then this decision is, is in front of us today. So I'm excited about it. Been out there. It's an amazing, amazing property. Already, I am without putting a dime into it. It's already an amazing property. So I look forward to seeing what it's like once it's open.
I guess folks are just offering some commentary, but I guess what has impressed me, obviously, we saw the same thing and I think we all came home with ticks. It was kind of incredible. I think three days later I was finding ticks.
We did not.
We did. Must have been, you know, the laundry soap I was using something. Can't say enough about the project itself, just a piece of, the piece of land. But what has been so impressive is really the holistic approach at coming at how this can be funded. And, you know, when we first looked at it, it was like, well, what is this going to cost? And of course, the bond is still, it's a legitimate cost, right? It's five point five million dollars. And to some degree, maybe it takes away from other dollars that could be spent somewhere else. But between the foundation, the grant dollars. The dollars that the state is willing to put up through DNR and to your point, leveraging nine million dollars and other dollars. It, it really is an incredible illustration of how you can leverage all kinds of different assets. To create something like this, that's just not on the backs of taxpayers. It really is kind of a, a funding strategy. And I hope as we look forward to other projects in this community that we've talked about, even on the five year plan, that this can be kind of a model for how we continue to do business. And not just maybe one of the reasons we have such a low tax rate compared to other communities, or maybe they're not as diligent about taking the time to make sure that we're funding this. In the best possible way and not putting it all on taxpayers, because that would be the easy thing to do. And that's what we've been elected not to do. And so that's why we, we ask so many questions. But I've been so impressed with the robust approach to finding alternative funding for this.
I just want to comment that in my district, I have a very unique district, which has very rural district, much like Union Township. And I have the very urban Hoosier Village. And then everything in between, which involves lots of properties that have expansive land. Along Hunt Club Road and on north of ninety sixth street. And I'll say, I've been on the phone. I called two hundred and eighty eight people in, in that district. Some of you might be here today. And I got lots of no's for increasing taxes. And I agree, I don't like to increase taxes unless it's for public safety. If we have a public safety issue, then we'll raise taxes. There's no question asked. However, this is a very challenging situation. Because I may have to go against my gut and my gut is to not increase taxes. But to play ball with the rest of the town of Zionsville. In hopes that we'll look at Perry Township and have a similar opportunity like this in ten, five, twenty years from now. So I'm alluding to the fact that. I'm leaning towards voting yes on this. And I will say, Jared, you've given a heck of a presentation. Nancy and Jim, I've visited your house recently to try and get a better gauge of how to do this. And I'm really, really torn because it's a tax increase and I really wish we could sit back and look at trying to figure out. How to come up with the one point five two million dollars, which is the delta between everything that's paid for and what we need. So really, we need one point five two. However, to purchase the property, I understand the process, the bonding. But I just want everybody to be clear, including the two hundred and eighty eight people of the two hundred and seventeen that said, don't raise my taxes. I, I really appreciate all the work that's been into this. I'm a naturalist myself in many ways. And Jared, I can't thank you enough for, for putting in the effort. I just asked that as we move forward with this project, whatever counselor is sitting in my seat next year. Please don't continue to increase our taxes. And make that burden spread out throughout the whole community. and make that burden spread out throughout the whole community, because we don't have to. I don't think we have to on this. However, there's a timeline. We have a contract signed, and I value that, and I value the donation charitably by the carpenters and the hard work of the Parks Board as well. With that, it's up to you guys.
I'd like to say we give Jared a pretty hard time up here. You did a good job tonight. Seriously. It was really good.
All right. Anything else from counselors? I think we will do. Actually, I guess at this point I would entertain a motion.
I move to a dot com first reading.
First by Counselor Choi, second by Vice President Burke. I think we'll do a roll call vote here, Amy, if that's all right.
Okay, President Plante.
No.
Vice President Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Choi.
Yes.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Nelson.
Yes.
Counselor Trailer.
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes six in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, Jared. Well, I will make a. I will make a quick comment. I know many of you are here for the for that. So you're certainly welcome to leave if you would like. But but the next reading on this will be on the May first meeting, so that we have all counselors here. So just a heads up there. Up next on the agenda is an ordinance consideration or a consideration to ordinance amending the town of Zionsville zoning ordinance. This is petition two thousand and twenty-two dash zero one Z. And this is ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash ten.
If we could make sure there's no talking in the room since we've still got an active meeting, that would be great. You're welcome to walk outside and talk.
Let's talk outside, please. Keep it shuffling. There we go.
Hey, Jared, it might. It might help if you walk outside because seems like that's a
Your poppers.
You're popular right now.
Stopping spot.
All right. Again, this is ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash ten, and we have Janice with us this evening. Janice, good evening.
Yes. Good evening, counselors. I'm Janice Stavonovich, Planning Manager with the Community and Economic Development Department in the town of Zionsville. I'm here to introduce a rezone petition to you. Staff has provided the town council with a memorandum outlining the request, an ordinance for execution if approved, a favorable certification from the Plan Commission, and a zoning location map. Please allow me to highlight a few points before the project's representative, Mr. Cross, presents this request. This request is a Plan Commission docket two thousand and twenty-three dash oh one dash C, a petition for rezoning of one point two eight eight acres from the RSF two zoning district to the urban neighborhood business B one district, also being in the urban Michigan road overlay. The location is one one six nine five east, five fifty south, AKA Templin Road in Zionsville. This is the southwest corner of the intersection of US four twenty-one and five fifty souths. There is no proposed development currently for this parcel. The petition is solely to rezone the involved project prop property. The submitted rezoning map reflects the parcel south of this parcel along four twenty-one up into Sycamore Street are presently zoned B ones. I've noticed that the subject site is within the urban Michigan road overlay, which requires a minimum lot area of two acres per development. Future development of the one point two eight eight acres subject site would require either the addition of a date of adjacent parcels to achieve the minimum lot area or development standards variance from the board zoning appeals. Reading directly from the B one ordinance, the B one ordinance states that the neighborhood business districts are established to promote development of areas for convenient uses which tend to meet the daily needs of the residents of the immediate residential districts. Uses within the B one districts are regulated in intensity and character to assure harmonious development with the residential districts served and are limited in size and scale to promote pedestrian access and ensure capable capability of this district with the adjacent residential development. The Plan Commission did provide a favorable recommendation to Town Council for this rezone March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. If there's no questions for me, I will introduce Mr. Cross.
What was the Plan Commission vote?
The seven zero was unanimous.
Thank you.
Janice, you real quick, you mentioned that this is what was the last part you said there about the the residential neighborhood adjacent to the to the to the lot?
Right. The whole idea of the B one ordinance is basically transitional. It's not an intense usage. It's meant to be compatible with the residential uses that it connects to.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is John Cross. My address is thirteen North State Street, Suite two forty-one, Greenville, Indiana. And I represent the petitioner, Block A LLC, who is also the owner of the property in light of the last agenda item. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, given how I believe simple the request is from the petitioner here. The history of this parcel is the current owner is affiliated with the development of Lost Run Farms, which is the community to the west residential community. Block A is the last property that is owned by an affiliate of that developer. The purpose of this subject property was for commercial parking when Lost Run Farm was being developed. Since then, it has sat vacant. And in the last year or so, the owner went under contract to sell it to an individual who planned to use it for medical office purposes. And that was the petitioner who originally started this petition. But then subsequently, that deal fell through, the buyer backed out, and so the owner said, well, if the ball's already moving, then they would like to go ahead and see if they can push it across the finish line, as it seemed as if rezoning this property would be harmonious to the properties immediately around it. So the request is to zone it similarly to the lots to the south, the properties of the southwest corner of four twenty-one and Templin and one twenty-first. So the lots to the south are all also owned B one, as shown on the map to the east across forty-one, the properties that but Michigan Road there are zoned primarily B one, and there are some B office uses as well. So as stated by Janice, the B one zoning district is designed specifically for transitional uses, either budding other commercial properties or residential neighborhoods such as this. At the Plan Commission hearing, they did vote unanimously in favor of the petition. There were members of the Lost Run Farm community who showed up and remonstrated against it. Voice and concerns regarding development of the parcel, privacy concerns, and what I would expect, and honestly, what I feel the same way when when plans are put right next to you where you live. Our response was that the B one zoning district is designed specifically for this within mind that these zoning parcels can exist harmoniously next to residential properties. There is plenty of space between them, but most importantly, as was stated, this parcel here is less than two acres. And because it is subject to the Michigan Road overlay, it is going to require variances in the future, no matter what is done on it. So all the petitioner is seeking here tonight is approval to reason to be one for the purpose of then marketing it for sale for someone who is believed to be a put a better use in this cornlot property than a residential lot, which just doesn't seem to fit, given the other parcels immediately around it. So the request is kind of a phase one rezone to be one now. The intent by the petitioner is to market it, sell it to a an appropriate person or business who can use it for a permitted use, but they will then have to seek variances to even build on it. So there will be plenty of opportunity from both the town of Zionsville to ensure that there is proper development there, as well as that by the community around it. So with that, we would request approval of the zoning ordinance as petitioned, and I'd be happy to answer any questions there, maybe.
John, for a long time, this was the Lost Run Farms construction entrance. Is it no longer serving in that capacity?
To my knowledge, it's not. There's still an existing gravel lot on it, connects both the the north road and the east road. But I don't believe that there's any access to the the neighborhood.
And I assume this has no tax implications in terms of revenue to the town. The rezone may even be positive as it's recategorize. There's no reduction in tax payments by this rezone, correct?
To my personal knowledge, I'd be an assessor question. If it gets rezoned to a commercial use, I would suspect that could incre- I don't know if that would increase taxes immediately if it remains vacant, but use would then change. So that could cause there to be a higher tax bracket on it. But clearly, if it gets developed, I believe a commercial property would be probably taxed higher than residential at that time.
Yeah, that I mean, and I live right near here. This makes all the sense in the world. I have no issues with this.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I just wonder if we don't want to talk to the RDC about including them in the EDA we just did, that economic development area, because we stopped right there.
Yeah. Oh.
You know, so if this does get changed, it sure feels like we'd want to include this property in the in that economic development area. So.
And we don't have a current project proposed or anything. It's just strictly to market the property.
That is correct. The the owner is actively trying to sell it. So there's kind of a open offer to accept any sort of purchase for it. So once the buyer fell out, the owner said, well, if we can get it rezoned, it better market it. That's what they wanted to do.
It's currently residential?
Yeah. Yes.
Physician is right, though. No one would ever buy. No one ever built a house there.
No doubt.
At least I'd hope not.
Are there any other questions for John or any other discussion from counselors? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second, first by Counselor Garrett, second by Counselor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those post same sign. Motion passes seven favors, zero opposed.
Thank you. Up next is other matters. I know we're running running a little long here, but if you would bear with me, I just want to take one minute to acknowledge Allison Gutwine, the Executive Director for the Zionsville Chamber of Commerce. For all the work that she's done for the town, both chamber members and non-members, and the work that she's done with this council. She's been a true ambassador for the town of Zionsville. This is unfortunately for us, her last meeting as Executive Director. We're losing her to the Boone County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. Having served on that board in the past, I'm I'm really looking forward to to some of the stuff you can do there. So.
Fortunate for her. It's her last name.
Yeah. All right. Anything else from counselors?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
First by Counselor Garrett, second by Counselor Culp. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those close same sign. Motion passes seven favors, zero opposed. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven thirty AM in Zionsville Town Hall Council Chambers. Final notice will be posted in compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Thank you.